All right, I will give you a hand signal as usual.
Okay, hold on, sorry, give me a minute.
Yeah, no problem.
This is episode three eighty seven.
Three eighty seven.
Okay, I didn't do the transfer of topics, so we do that. Okay, I'm good when you are, yeah.
All right, I'll give you, um, press the go on Facebook as soon as that goes, I'll give you the hand signal.
This is episode three hundred eighty seven of the Rio Grande Foundation's Tipping Point, New Mexico. I'm Paul Gessing.
And I'm Wally Drangmeister.
I'm president of the Rio Grande Foundation, New Mexico's free market think tank. You can find out more about the foundation at rio grande foundation dot O R G. While we're not in our usual friendly confines, you are there in the cold and snowy Albuquerque. But the guessing family took a vacation to somewhat warmer climes. And so we're recording this a little differently today, but you haven't gotten buried in a in a blizzard or anything, right?
Yeah, we've gotten buried in a dusting of snow here on the southeast part of Albuquerque, so.
All right, well, you know, we will always take the moisture and when you can get said moisture while you're out of town, it's even better. So now there's a lot going on in the world and around New Mexico. And something that really impacts everything going on in the news today is former New Mexico politician Deb Hollands, who represented congressional district one here in Albuquerque, as well as being just a political activist and being involved with politics prior to getting elected to Congress. But Deb Hollands, in her moments of potential glory, if you will, as Secretary of the Interior, is nowhere to be found. And the Rio Grande Foundation asked this question recently because Deb Holland, as Secretary of the Interior, manages the federal government's onshore subsurface minerals, seven hundred million acres, thirty percent of the United States surface area held by the Bureau of Land Management, which is under the Interior Department. That that's a lot of potential energy resources, up to ten percent of American production of things like oil and gas. And not to mention timber and other products that are in high demand right now. Her calendar hasn't been updated nearly a year. Okay, that's fine, she's been doing things. But she's not issued a single press release or really done a talk or anything about the energy crisis situation going on right now in Ukraine and Russian invasion. You go to her Twitter page, the secretarial page, nothing from her on increasing production in federal lands. Instead, Deb Holland spends her time talking about replacing the name squaw in in all federally owned lands. She talks about the usual renewables, maybe talking about cleaning up orphaned oil and gas wells. But really, she should be in her element right now. But I suspect, and I believe that it has more to do with the Biden administration and really Deb Holland's own ideological preferences that really they are not saying anything about what could and should be done by the federal government, specifically Holland's agencies, to address American energy issues right now.
Yeah, it is interesting, the Biden administration, Paul, has they know about oil prices, they know what that does to the American consumer, the risk that places on the American economy and the entire economy. And let's just remember back, it's not that long ago, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, when oil prices spiked and in the one fifty range and really precipitated a worldwide recession. You know, bordering bordering on depression in some areas, although I think that would be overstating the case here. And so the Biden administration, they've been pretty active, talking to other places about having them put more oil out like OPEC. And it doesn't seem like OPEC's biting. Big surprise here, OPEC does not mind higher prices, particularly if they don't have to pump as much. And as long as the economy doesn't totally tank. But yeah, what do we do here? They're on a path here that it's not necessarily a no oil path or a limited fossil fuel path. It's a limited fossil fuel path for domestic USA production. And it is very interesting, it's very ironic that that is as the position they're taking because they, you know, talk about Biden going possibly to Saudi Arabia. And if the kind of political gossip sites are correct, Saudi Arabia said, we don't want to talk to you. Well, I think that, you know, the Department of Interior and the Biden administration could do a lot to get production up right here in the USA. And it's interesting, a lot of people say, well, what about the Department of Energy? Well, it's interesting on a fossil fuel production basis in the short term. The Department of Energy really doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about here. They're much more of the nuclear stockpile, R and D projects, whatever. Make no mistake, it's the Department of Interior that that does it primarily, the Bureau of Land Management. And they show no signs of deviating from their domestic policy while foreign wise, they would like more oil to be produced. And the other thing is, Paul, we're producing a lot of oil right now, make no mistake about it. But there's always the question, could we be able to produce more? And at what level do market forces start to cause places like Saudi Arabia to have to pump more? So they get the same amount of revenue that they get now. It's all that we've seen this happen before, you know, the one thing about oil prices, if you don't like them today, they will likely change in the future. It's been less than a year and a half that the spot price of oil was negative. And now we're above a hundred consistently, both in West Texas Intermediate, good old fashioned American oil, as well as on the international market, the Brent crude price.
Yeah, and according to a two thousand twenty one article from the Carlsbad Current Argus, August eleventh, twenty twenty one, the state of New Mexico. And we knew this kind of in a way from the discussion about the Biden administration's permitting moratorium that they enacted right when they entered office. But this twenty twenty one report says that New Mexico is, of course, the most reliant state on federal lands, energy production, which is not a surprise, but that about fifty percent, slightly more of our entire production in New Mexico, which of course, we're the second leading oil producing state in the country. But half of that produced in New Mexico comes off of federal lands. About thirty five percent comes off of state lands and the balance is on private lands. So New Mexico really could see particular benefits, interestingly enough, if a former New Mexico politician would engage a little bit more in improving energy production and expanding upon energy production on those federal lands. It was kind of the sort of thing that in years past, you would almost be worried about corruption. Well, politician X is from New Mexico, New Mexico will benefit disproportionately. Well, things have changed. Now, it's not about what state or area you represent and the danger or the fear that that is going to lead to some kind of inappropriate relationship. It's Deb Holland is a wholly owned subsidiary of the radical environmental movement, and she is going to act in a way that benefits those people, not her states, and certainly not the United States. So it's a kind of a sad situation, but only the voters can hold these politicians accountable.
Yeah, a couple of points to make, Paul, you know, yes, the public land, federal land is a big part of New Mexico's production. And it used to be half of those royalties go to the state of New Mexico or flowed back to the state. That's a big part of our surplus. The last I checked, it was like forty eight percent. So the key is, is that the, you know, obviously state land, those royalties all go to the state. But on that huge federal part, ha- almost half of those royalties go to the state of New Mexico. And to put into perspective, just on a national and, you know, increasingly international stage, New Mexico's oil production from a historical basis, you know, this last year, and these numbers change a little bit, but right under four hundred and forty three million barrels of oil were produced in twenty twenty one here in New Mexico. And, you know, if you're just to go back to the year two thousand, that was sixty nine million. So, you know, in twenty years, we've gone from sixty nine million to four hundred and forty two million. It's a, you know, it's a huge increase. And so the answer to the trivia question is, who was governor when New Mexico had record oil production? The answer to that is definitely Michelle Lujan Grisham. And that doesn't mean that her policies are supportive necessarily or will be good for the industry over the longer term. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, New Mexico is big in oil production right now.
No doubt, and just looking at aggregate numbers does not necessarily imply that one governor or another is more or less friendly to the energy industry. We've talked extensively about Michelle Lujan Grisham's mixed record. Really, this is about technology, this is about new discoveries and new opportunities to find oil and gas in New Mexico. And it leads us directly to the next conversation, Wally, which is that we are going to have a special session. And we discussed this on the last podcast, and I think our concern was that you were going to have potential discussion of the the voting bill that was filibustered to a close in a regular thirty day session and that this was a camel's nose under the tent to get that done. It does not look like that at this point. We haven't seen, as far as I can tell, a specific agenda that the governor will limit things to. But because it is a special session, she does control the agenda. And it appears that there will be discussion of the pork bill and getting some kind of revised version of that, as well as some potential relief for New Mexico taxpayers, motorists, something along those lines. And before I hand it over to you, Wally, it's it's not a bad thing. It's certainly welcome if in this inflationary environment with record oil and gas production and prices right here in New Mexico, that we see some of that money returned to the taxpayers. It is also not a coincidence that this is an election year, the governor sees herself as having a tough fight, and I believe she will. And with all that money flowing in, she is more than happy to spread the wealth, so to speak, a little bit of Christmas in April with the kicking off of this special session. So I suspect we're going to see, you know, some some significant money flowing from the state coffers out through New Mexico, maybe even, you know, fifty million dollar pork bill. Well, it could be a hundred million dollar pork bill. This could be her way of placating a lot of folks that feel like she hasn't done a great job in the first three, three and a half years of her governorship.
Yeah, and it is interesting, Paul, where we've gotten to in these in tax policy in New Mexico. You know, you don't have to have listened to the podcast much to know that I think that restructuring of the gross receipts tax is probably the single biggest thing that New Mexico could do to improve the economic climate and, you know, the prospects for our citizens. But, you know, this is a situation where, Paul, if, you know, you just cut the tax rates and people never send the money to you in Santa Fe, you don't get political credit. So this is a situation like if I were to give you twenty dollars and then you give me twenty dollars back. I'm like, boy, do I feel good about you, Paul, giving me my my own twenty dollars back. But in this case, we're doing that here in New Mexico. But there are crickets about structural tax things, which not surprising. We've talked about that, how hard it is to get that done. That sort of political leadership has not made it self evident here in New Mexico in a long, long time. But yeah, we will basically have, you know, Christmas and whatever, April, May, June, July, whenever the checks come out or however they decide to do it. And will it help a little bit? Yes, but it it's not really the big issue that we have right now. The issue is we have a lot of revenue coming in and we could do things to make our state more tax friendly so that there will be more jobs here, there will be more economic opportunity. But we get this better than nothing, I guess.
Yeah, and just to be a hundred percent clear, the the state of New Mexico could easily eliminate taxes. It could easily reform the gross receipts tax, and those would be the far superior options. For example, Alaska does not have a state income tax or a state sales tax. And they produce a lot less oil and their population is smaller. But there's a lot of unique aspects to Alaska, but they get by without those taxes. And they have a far smaller oil and gas footprint actually than New Mexico does. So, you know, we do have a lot of opportunities in New Mexico to really use this money for bettering our state and even engaging in what I think the progressive left says they want to do, which is to diversify our economy away from oil and gas. And we could certainly do a lot to diversify our economy by being more business friendly and using the oil and gas money that we're generating right now to do that. Now, that being all said, and Albuquerque Journal editorialized about an Alaska style citizen dividend from the permanent fund of of the state like Alaska has, and that's all fine and good. Again, if if we, the Rio Grande Foundation, if conservatives are in charge, you get your tax structure in the right place, you reform the gross receipts tax to make it more like a sales tax, you start reducing to the point of elimination your personal income tax, and then we can talk about some kind of citizen dividend situation. But we are obviously not in charge. And at the same time, as I say all that, if a special session is called and that involves sending money back to New Mexicans, we can't help but to say that is a good thing.
Yeah, no question, it's a good thing, Paul. But as you say, you know, there's always talk about big, bold initiatives in New Mexico. And, you know, look how difficult it was to get, you know, the state tax off of social security. And there's all kinds of caveats to that, it just wasn't clean, you know, and that's relatively small amount of money. Yeah, there's a it's one of those things, and it's not necessarily unique to New Mexico. But, boy, it seems like it's as bad here as anywhere I know of around the country. Yes, to do a tax reduction structurally, no matter how meager, it seems like that is pulling teeth, you know. But to raise taxes, you know, in the last several years, even though revenue's been high, there've been fees and taxes. Those raise real easy here in New Mexico very easily. And so, yeah, we get our little goody and we'll go on and see what happens this fall in the election. We have a sixty day session coming up and depending on what happens to the economy of the world and oil and gas, will there be, will there be an appetite towards doing something that's, you know, meaningful and sustained from a tax policy point of view, we'll have to wait and see.
And one of the things that may be discussed is some kind of waiver of the gas tax. The New Mexico government collects about two hundred and forty million dollars annually from the gas and special fuels tax. Were that to be waived, you would see some significant amount of money returned to motorists. That is one option. And, you know, while the federal government is in a state of massive debt and deficit, and, you know, that's a trickier question because they don't have the money available to replace the gas tax at the federal level. It's all about money printing. And of course, the federal government really has the capacity to expand production, as we just discussed. The state of New Mexico has money flowing out of its, you know what, everywhere with record level production and prices around a hundred and ten dollars a barrel. The state has plenty of money to waive the gas tax and make up for that with general fund revenue coming into the state. So that that's an option. And again, some relief is better than no relief. Obviously, systematically, we need change to the approach that New Mexico is on when it comes to its taxation and broad economic policy. But we're not holding our breath for that. So, Wally, the the coverage of this situation is really interesting. And, you know, we could do a whole podcast on critiquing Kevin Robinson Avila at the Albuquerque Journal. But when they do these big three part stories, and, you know, I think it's safe to say that the the print media, you get a lot more in-depth analysis and information than you get from, you know, a lot of over the air sources. But on Sunday, and of course, more people get the Sunday paper than others. He wrote about the war in the Ukraine, putting the oil industry in the crosshairs. Now, it's funny, and I know you'll sympathize with this, Wally, but even with the oil and gas industry does absolutely mind-blowingly good things for New Mexicans, for the country as a whole, the media tend to portray it as some kind of negative. And this is a perfect example of this in practice because the industry should not be in the crosshairs. Yes, you have some radical greens, radical environmentalists like Martin Heinrich saying, oh, this is an indicator that we need to double down on clean energy, renewable energy. Well, those, if those could do the job, they would be doing the job. They're not doing the job, they're not able to do the job, and they won't do the job for the foreseeable future. It's the fracking process, it's the dramatic expansion of oil and gas production in the United States that has allowed us to get through this entire situation while not having gas lines, while not having the prices you have in Europe for gasoline, et cetera, et cetera. So we should be thanking our lucky stars for the technology development of fracking. We were able to heat our homes and continue to keep the lights on thanks to those processes. It just, this is more of a media critique, Wally, than anything else.
Well, and, you know, I don't know, one thing I will say is a lot of times the headlines are not written by the person who writes the story. And a lot of times the headline is not necessarily in any way a fair summarization of the story that goes by. But it would be a lot like saying, you know, I don't know, the the energy industry, the electric energy industry is in the crosshairs as electricity prices go up. It's like, well, yeah, but as you say, what was the idea that somehow because our, you know, the oil is produced domestically, that somehow is making the price higher than it would be otherwise if there was no production in New Mexico or in the US? You know, that headline just takes you down a very, very weird road.
Well, in this case, I did read the article very carefully. And the headline does largely reflect what the article has to say. There are, of course, quotes from people like Senator Heinrich and other skeptics of the oil and gas industry. I think one of the people more, one of the more interesting people, I should say, although I find his comments to be kind of unfortunate and clueless, is Jim Peach, the economist out of New Mexico State, who he famously, well, to me famously on our podcast, basically came out and endorsed the idea of modern monetary theory. But he is quoted as saying that laying the blame on Biden for high prices, of course, is almost as stupid as blaming Jimmy Carter for oil shortages in the seventies, Peach told the Journal. Now, I don't find, quite frankly, either of those blaming issues to be completely out of line. There were price controls enacted, unfortunately, not just under Carter, but under people like Richard Nixon too, which caused serious problems. But the the real issue is that there was not the technology and the ability, we thought, to find oil and gas here domestically. That really came along with fracking a decade, a decade and a half ago here in the United States. And now we do have the energy resources if the Biden administration would just allow them to go after it. So it, you know, I'm not here to critique every single news article that comes about from the Albuquerque Journal or any other media outlet. But again, it's another media outlet trying to whitewash what easily could be a problem seriously addressed by the administration of Washington that is not being addressed.
No, no question, I read that article too, Paul. I must have been a little sleepy, only under one cup of coffee because I yawned my way through it. It was a bunch of disjointed quotes that, you know, it reminded me of a, it reminded me of a kindergarten classroom, everybody talking in a different direction, but not necessarily a unifying theme. And so to say, are they in the crosshairs? I guess they are, you know, it's like oil and gas in New Mexico, they've been in the crosshairs from the environmental point of view a long time. And then the question is, is that are we going to use oil? Do we need oil in our modern, our modern utopian economy? And if so, for how long? And if we do, and the answer is, just not to give away the surprise ending for my movie trailer here, Paul, we'll need it, and we do need it for a long, long time. Where will it be produced? And then what will it cost? And so those are the issues. So, yeah, is there attention on the industry? Absolutely. But, you know, there has been, there always will be. And, yeah, like I say, what are the alternatives? And what are you really going to do? Because when you have the federal government going to places like Venezuela and Saudi Arabia and been begging them to, you know, produce more, the idea is maybe we could do a little more here or figure something else out. And it's going to be crazy time again, we're going to get corporate greed and they're making too much money at the oil companies. So let's do a windfall profits tax like we did in the seventies. And, you know, there's all kinds of crazy things that were tried and didn't work then and were counterproductive. But that doesn't mean we might not try them again because that's one of the talking points you're seeing too is because the price is high and it's good for the energy companies, that must mean they're doing something wrong. And by producing more, they're making the price go up, which I don't know. It's interesting how supply and demand somehow escapes, you know, policymakers or at least politicians from time to time.
Yeah, and the media allow them to get away with it, not call them on the policies that really affect us all. But speaking of misguided policies that affect us all, you know, there's always a flood of bills in any legislative session in New Mexico. And the Rio Grande Foundation tries to point out and address some of the very worst. But I was recently asked to comment on something that passed this session. It was S B one thirty four, the Affordable Housing Funds that Center Square asked me about. And, you know, this is a proposal, well, it was an enacted proposal, but it's going to dedicate two and a half percent of annual severance tax bond capacity for this fund in order to generate approximately twenty million dollars, at least initially, for so-called affordable housing. And again, this is basic government's misguided approach to the problem, which is prices are going up, we all know throughout New Mexico. The price of rents in just one year went up thirteen point seven percent nationwide, eighteen and a half percent in Albuquerque, houses are going up as well. So do you address the problem? Or do you pour more money into a problem that's been created by too much money? money going into the housing market? Of course, I'm talking about inflation as a primary driver of increased housing costs. But the secondary one is the supply chain issues, energy issues, everything is going up. Not all of it is driven just by inflation, as we talk about energy. And of course, you're trucking two-by-fours and timber and other housing materials across the country, having diesel prices where they are is going to increase those costs as well. So, it's just another way that government in New Mexico is spending money to supposedly address a problem when if they actually address the problem, we might solve it, but they're not going to solve it.
Yeah. And, you know, and it's interesting how many of these things act like they are immune to, politically act like they're immune to economic forces. And housing is certainly one of those, you know, it's one of those things. Believe me, this, I, I agree with you, this low-income housing bill is probably not going to do a whole lot to dramatically change the cost of housing in any meaningful way anywhere. But, you know, it reminds me of places where he's like, well, we need, rents are too high, so we need rent control. And just all the craziness that's happened from there. Let me just say, this bill that passed is better than rent control. Hopefully, that won't happen in New Mexico, because nothing encourages people to hoard onto their rent, you know, keep their apartments and all the crazy things that happen, and discourage building of, of new housing as when something like that happens. And then to your point, the overall economy, the supply chain, the labor market, a lot of things are messed up right now with regard to being able to build new housing. And you don't have to look too far to find a place like Santa Fe County and the city of Santa Fe, New Mexico, to say, try to build something there and see how hard it is, you know, and then talk about why housing prices are high.
Yeah. Well, Wally, you must have woken up on the right side of the bed because you're, you know, and I agree with you, yeah. Rent control, and there have been rumblings out there, kind of in the national media discussion, and some politicians at the national level talking about that idea. That would be a very much worst-case scenario. Wasting $20 million is, is a somewhat superior option to that, but it's definitely not going to solve the problem. And I would only add that we do have in New Mexico and in other places, quite the NIMBY problem. So it's not just a issue of rising, you know, rising prices from the inflationary or even the oil and gas and the natural resource side of things. There's also the aspect of local governments, and you mentioned Santa Fe, they are, I think, if not ground zero, they are close to ground zero among US cities for some of these NIMBY kinds of policies and real approaches that artificially drive up the cost of apartments. They drive up the cost of housing as well and make life just a lot less affordable. So it's a, it definitely is a policy issue or a series of policy issues that could be addressed. And any one of those would help the situation.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm trying to find the quote, but, oh, yeah, the, you know, the fastest way to destroy a city other than bombing is rent control. You know, I, I do think that's, that's kind of true. And not to put too fine a point on it, but in the city of, New York City has other problems as well. But they have a lot of unemployment. They have a lot of rent control. They have a lot of crime. They have a lot of these policies that, that all kind of line up where they sound good, one-off, if you don't think them through or see how effective they are. And so, yes, hopefully nationally, and certainly here in New Mexico, boy, I don't think rent control is ever going to be our answer.
I could not agree more with you. And we, we could definitely do some things federally, state and locally to reduce housing prices, but just pouring money into the situation, which I believe the other phrase is, you know, when the whole world is a nail, or when the whole world is a hammer, all you need is a nail. So, or everything's a nail. So it's a, when you have a lot of money flowing into government coffers, the idea is you're going to spend that money, and that's going to be your solution.
Yeah. And hopefully, Paul, we'll use it to facilitate the building of housing or building something worthwhile and useful, and not just use it to proverbially drive nails into the coffin over our economy here in New Mexico.
Exactly. Now, taking the discussion into here, the city of Albuquerque, city council met just last night, and there were some important issues addressed. One was vaccine mandates. The city council voted five to four. Basson, Grouse, Trudy Jones, Louis Sanchez, and Dan Lewis made the proposal itself, voted in favor of eliminating a city vaccine mandate. Of course, we're talking about COVID-19. That was flirted with. I believe the city at one point, the Keller administration imposed such a mandate. And then when the federal Supreme Court decision happened, they repealed the mandate. So I don't think it ever really had affected people. The other four members, Davis, Benton, Feeblecorn, and Pena, this, on this issue, couldn't get Pena to join the pro freedom side of things. So this goes up to the mayor. I suspect very strongly that he will veto this particular bill. And unfortunately, that will leave us with potential for vaccine mandates at the city governments. And, you know, COVID-19 does seem to be receding into the, the rearview mirror. There's certainly problems in Japan, not Japan, China and Hong Kong, some of those countries. I believe there's upsurges in Europe, but the real problems have been in some of these Asian countries that have not had the severe outbreaks. There's always talk that a new upsurge could happen in New Mexico, but the, the point is, is that as an issue, COVID may or may not be completely receding by now. So who knows what the future holds in terms of viruses. But I, I do, you know, not support a vaccine mandate and would like to see this, this legislation pass. But I suspect five to four is not going to get the job done. So Clarissa Pena playing that swing vote role, as she will, for the foreseeable future at city council.
Yeah. And Paul, it'll be interesting to see whether the, you know, whether the mayor does veto that. He doesn't have to, you know, and it's one of those. So he vetoes it. He owns that personally. So, you know, that is, that is certainly the situation. And, you know, at the risk of our social media overlords blocking this podcast somewhere, you know, it's one of those things. The, the record on vaccinations in general has been ratcheted down many times in terms of what the benefits were going to be relative to the cost and the, and the challenges of that. So, yeah, we're, we're a few years into it, and vaccination is not as glowing as it was a few years ago in terms of being this universal good that why wouldn't anyone want to get one? So.
Yeah. And of course, we're just talking about government policy here at the city of Albuquerque, and, you know, whether that is something that needs to be done. Obviously, COVID is the immediate reference point. And it, I expect that the mayor will veto it, but we will track that, and we will watch the process unfold. Also at city council, and I had a opinion piece in the Albuquerque Journal on Sunday, talking about broadly speaking, the new tenor and welcome tenor at Albuquerque City Council. You know, we have this five to four, six to three split, but again, generally speaking, it's great to see good policies being discussed at Albuquerque City Council and freedom, at least on the agenda, which has not been the case. And this goes back to the Berry administration, even when they had a relatively decent city council. The Berry administration was not prodding that council to move forward with the freedom agenda, as it were, here with a five to four relatively solid majority, six to three swing majority, you know, the plastic bag ban being one of the primary things that has happened. But the, there was supposed to be a vote on reducing the gross receipts tax by an eighth of a cent. That was pushed off till the next meeting. Rio Grande Foundation has been and will continue to be active in pushing council to support that. It'll be another kind of tossed-up situation with regard to city council. Councilor Basson, who normally would be in the so-called Coalition of the Sane, she's somebody who is more on the conservative side. She's taken a pretty public stance against reducing that tax. So there may be some unlikely partisan, if you will, votes made on reducing the gross receipts tax. Some, you know, difference coalition of the willing than we've seen on issues like the plastic bag ban. So stay tuned. We will see. And certainly, we appreciate everybody who's been willing and active to send messages to the city council in support of reducing taxes.
Yeah. And it's interesting, you know, when we're talking about reducing taxes or reducing or restructuring regulation, it's amazing how there's always time to do a thorough job and really look at this from all sides and take care of it. When it's going the other way, it seems like, let's just do it. We don't, the talk, the time to talk is over.
Yeah. And three eighths of a cent tax increase was passed by Mayor Keller and the council at that time, I believe it was late 2018, early 2019, when that was all going on. Yeah, they didn't wait around for a vote of the people. They didn't really debate it much. It was just, boom, that tax increase. Now that we're looking at an eighth of a cent, it is a little bit of a slower process, unfortunately. But we remain optimistic that some kind of solution will be achieved. And, you know, it's kind of the reverse of the Everett Dirksen quote, a billion here, a billion there. We're talking about real money. Well, a, a state GRT reduction, a city GRT reduction, and we're starting to see the potential for some significant savings. Of course, inflation being what it is, it, you know, it's not like Happy Days are here again, but it is good that that money is potentially flowing back to consumers and businesses, et cetera. So unfortunately, the real changes to the gross receipts tax remain kind of on the horizon or hoped-for horizon down the road. We'll continue to push for that as well. But city of Albuquerque can't really do that. They can't change the systemic tax structure that the state has in, in place. And Wally, I just want to, as we conclude this podcast, acknowledge the passing of attorney Pat Rogers. Pat was never a guest on this show, but attorneys charge by the hour. And Pat was a great guy, a great friend of the foundation. He worked with us on various issues, including some campaign finance issues, those rules and the thicket of regulations that have been passed, especially at the local government level, are things that need to be addressed. And Pat was a very expert individual in addressing those. And he defended and worked with conservative organizations, of course, Republican Party organizations, but also the Rio Grande Foundation. He was a really great guy. And we don't talk about the passing of every individual involved in politics on this podcast, but Pat Rogers is certainly somebody who is worth kind of marking that particular occasion. I'm sure you knew Pat as well, Wally.
Yeah, absolutely. Pat is excellent, was a fantastic human being. There was a gleam in his eye and a wit that came out of him that was, I don't know, pleasant to be around, at times used against him politically as well. But just very, very nice man, fantastic guy. And yes, we are really going to miss Mr. Rogers.
All right. We will leave it there. Thanks for listening to this week's episode. Find all episodes at tippingpointsnm.com or at the Rio Grande Foundation's YouTube and Rumble channels. Subscribe to this show at Apple, Stitcher, or have your Google Home play Tipping Point New Mexico. Thanks to Path3 Marketing for producing this show.